I'm going to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Motion.
Second question, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Proclamation 220293. It's a proclamation proclaiming October 19, 2022 is Eddie Sporko Day in Lackawanna County.
Whereas born on November 12, 1922, today we celebrate the upcoming 100th birthday of Eddie Sporko of Scranton and recognize him for his contributions to Lackawanna County and the nation as a veteran of the United States Army. And whereas a lifelong resident of Scranton, Ed was born on Bryn Mawr Street, the son of Bolislaw and Sophie Nikowitz Sporko of Scranton. He was an honor roll graduate of Scranton Technical High School, class of 1941, and served in the Army from February 10, 1943 to December 22, 1945, achieving the rank of Corporal Assistant Squad Leader. Whereas Corporal Sporko served in Normandy, Northern France, Rhineland, and Central Europe as a member of the 208th Engineer Combat Battalion Company A. He was a rifle M1 marksman and an MG 30 caliber second-class gunner and was decorated with the American Campaign Medal, the World War II Victory Medal, the European African Middle Eastern Campaign Medal, and four Bronze Stars. And whereas Eddie and his late wife Helen were married for 70 years and raised three sons and a daughter, who gave them six grandchildren and six great-grandchildren with one more on the way, he retired as a technical designer and draftsman at Babcock and Wilcox after attending night school at Johnson College while working in the mines for several years. Now therefore, we, Jerry Notary, Annie, Debbie Dominic, myself, Chris Schirmack, Commissioners of County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do acknowledge and proclaim November 12, 2022 as Eddie Sporko Day in Lackawanna County. Congratulations. We also have, we also have Ange from Tom Welby's office. She also has something for Eddie, so come on up.
Right up.
Let Ange, well, let Ange do hers and then we'll do pictures.
Where do you want to put him? I'll go to the minute.
Go ahead.
I'm going to say just a few words. We also have a citation for you. This is like.
Oh, yeah, right here.
We also have a citation, much of the same, but I will leave with this last phrase. The House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pays tribute to Eddie Sporko upon the joyous celebration of his upcoming 100th birthday. Notes with appreciation that he has generously donated to the well-being of others and special recognition for his brave service to our great nation. Offer its best wishes for every future happiness and for every candle on his birthday cake. May he be granted a birthday wish that is guaranteed to come true. This is from State Representative Tom Welby. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
We'll get a picture.
You gotta work at it. That's the only thing. I appreciate what you're doing. I don't know how to thank you for it. Everybody snuck up on me this time. I got left behind. I gotta admit that. But I appreciate it. I never saw this coming.
Well deserved.
It's a tough world and we're doing pretty good, I think. But we gotta keep working at it. Don't ever give up. Life is too sweet. It could be short if you don't take care of it. I'm just lost for words. I'm caught up, I don't know what to say.
Let's get a picture.
Yep.
Hi. Hi, Debbie. Can I share?
Mr. Sporko, here's your birthday cupcake.
Goodness.
Get that box out of there. Are you looking at me? Jerry, move over one step that way. Very good. Here we go, everybody look, smile. Keep smiling. I'm good.
Happy birthday.
Lots of stuff.
Hi, Frank.
Enjoy the day. I have to enjoy it. Absolutely.
Thank you. Not often, but every now and then, there's something really nice, and that was a great proclamation presentation. United Way 2022-2023 Campaign. Here to speak about that is our own Jason Cavulich and United Way President Gary Drapak.
Good morning, everyone. I know folks really sometimes get tired of some of the messages I deliver, but like Mr. Sporko just said, never give up. This is about collaboration. This is about importance of working with community partners. There's no other entity in Lackawanna County that serves the human service community to the degree that our Human Service Department does the way the United Way does. And the United Way is incredibly important to the work that we do in this community and very important to the Department of Human Services and everyone in Lackawanna County. That's why we make such an effort to support the campaign here through our employees and through everything else that we can do to make sure that their campaign is successful. The work that they do helps us not only, you know, serve the people of Lackawanna County better, but collaboratively, it helps us do better work as a system. So we improve our work as a system, we improve the lives of our constituents, and there isn't a person in this room that the United Way doesn't benefit in some way, whether it be helping one of your loved ones get to daycare, helping an older adult with a meal, heating assistance. There's a variety of things that I can sit here and name for another hour that they do that touches the lives of everyone in this, in this room. And that's why we want to make sure that everyone knows it's important to the county, it's important to those who are driving the campaign, myself and Joe Duranzo here, but it's also important to our community and we want to lend support to it. So with that, I'd like to introduce my friend, Mr. Gary Drapak, from the United Way of Lackawanna County and Wayne County.
Thanks, Jason. Commissioners, thank you again. I'll be very brief. I just want to thank you, as always, for your help and support. I'm actually a little, believe it or not, and Jerry can attest, this doesn't happen often, speechless after listening to Mr. Sporko and, and his background, and boy, what a community we live in when we have people like that who are supporting us, and we see that all the time through United Way. This is going to be a very difficult year for us, and, and I think I don't have to preach to the choir, but we are already receiving requests for emergency assistance for heating assistance. And this is kind of unusual for us because this usually doesn't happen until November, December, at least into January. I'll tell you a real quick story about a call I received just last Friday, a 76-year-old gentleman who was calling me from the emergency room of CMC where his wife was receiving chemotherapy treatments, and he was paying for the wife's medications using his credit cards. And he had realized at that point in time that he had no oil in his tank, and he was getting set to take her home. Is there any way we could help? We were able to give him at the time, which was the minimum delivery, of 125 gallons of oil just to get him by until we can get him additional service. The problem that we're seeing is that this time last year, oil was $2.70 a gallon. Today, it's over $5 a gallon. For that order, that was a little over $600 for 125 gallons of oil. I think this is an indication of what we're going to see as we move forward in the next couple of weeks and months, and the only support that we have, really, we don't, we get no government support for this program. It all comes from community donations. So I'm asking the community and the county to come together for us once again this year to help individuals like that. I would be remiss if I did not say thank you to Jason, who was just here. Jason, I, well, the joke is that he has an annex office in our building, because Jason and I are on the phone almost daily, if not with myself, he's with Peg Copko, trying to figure out how we can better serve the senior population of our community, but not only the senior population, we worked hand in hand over the past couple of months with providing the COVID vaccines to individuals in the county. So Jason, I want to thank you for everything that, that you've done as well for us. Thank you, Commissioners, and we are always here to help. Anything you can do for us, or anything we can do for you.
Thanks, Gary. Appreciate it. Yeah, if everyone just gives a little bit, it makes a big difference. Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. No one? Okay, thank you. Ordinance, first reading, 220294.
Ordinance 281, establishing the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee. Of the Board of County Commissioners, creating and establishing the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County believe it to be in the interest of the residents of Lackawanna County to establish a county literacy committee. And whereas the Board of Commissioners desire to establish a committee to promote literacy, education, reading, and the arts in Lackawanna County. And whereas the Board of Commissioners desire to promote literacy, education, and access to learning materials, books, periodicals, and other educational materials for children and adults in Lackawanna County through the establishment of a literacy committee. According to the U.S. Department of Education, 54% of U.S. adults ages 16 to 74 years old, about 130 million people, lack proficiency in literacy, reading below the equivalent of a sixth grade level. The cognitive, linguistic, academic, emotional, social, and physical health consequences of their reading difficulties significantly diminish their opportunities in school, work, and life. Now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, and it is hereby enacted by the Board of the County as follows. Creation and Purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to create the Lackawanna County Literacy Committee, whose goal in literacy and education is to strengthen the capacity of communities to support basic education and literacy and increase adult literacy. The committee shall support education for all children and literacy for children and adults. The committee will hold public meetings and meet with local government partners and other community stakeholders to discuss and promote literacy and education throughout Lackawanna County, provide mechanisms and materials to promote education and literacy in children and adults throughout the community, and seek available sources of funding to realize these goals. The committee shall issue an annual report to the Board of Commissioners on its programs, progress, and recommendations. Committee. The number of members. The committee shall be comprised of nine members who shall be appointed by the Board. The members of the committee shall serve at the pleasure of the Board of Commissioners. Term of Service. Initially, three committee members shall be appointed to a two-year term, to a two-year term, three committee members shall be appointed to a three-year term, and three committee members shall be appointed to a four-year term, thereby staggering the terms. Upon expirations of the initial appointed terms, all terms for committee members shall be for a period of four-year terms. Members of the committee shall continue to serve until their successors have been appointed and qualified. Compensation and Expenses. Members of the committee shall serve without compensation and may seek reimbursement for expenses associated with the duties relating to the committee activities. Officers. The literacy committee members shall annually elect officers to serve as Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, and Treasurer. Vacancies. Any vacancy in the committee shall be filled by an appointment of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners. Meetings of the Board. The literacy committee shall hold regular public meetings and shall allow for public comment on matters under deliberation at each such public meeting. Place, date, and time of the literacy committee meetings shall be determined at the discretion of the officers. All meetings of the committee shall comply with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. The Chair of the committee may call special meetings by written notice, deliver at least 24 hours in advance to each committee member, and advertise in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act. Special meetings may also be called upon with written notice signed by a majority of the committee members and delivered at least 24 hours in advance to each committee member and advertise in accordance. Literacy Committee Duties. The literacy committee shall have the following duties. To conduct regular public meetings to gain input and information relevant to the promotion of education and literacy in Lackawanna County. Assess the feasibility of establishing programs to promote and support basic education and literacy throughout the communities in Lackawanna County. To identify and engage with potential stakeholders and nonprofit organizations to partner within organizing, planning, and conducting programs and providing educational materials for children and adults throughout Lackawanna County. To make an annual report to the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners of its progress, findings, and recommendations. To make an application directly or indirectly to any federal, state, county, or municipal government or agency, or any other source, whether public or private, for grants, gifts, guarantees, or any aid or financial assistance in furtherance of the literacy committee's public purpose, and to accept and use the same upon such terms and conditions as are prescribed by such federal, state, county, or municipal government or agency or any other source. All other duties provided for, authorized, are allocated by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County. All ordinances and parts of ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed insofar as they are inconsistent herewith. Our second reading is going to be November 2nd, and then this will be adopted.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry. There's no need to take a vote at this point, so we'll move on to resolutions. 220292, approving current payables.
Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County has hereby approved the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 347684 to 348462 inclusive, totaling $2,130,524.85. The electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $9,292,826.60.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 220287, approving a local economic revitalization tax assistance property in Carbondale and Mayfield.
Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County regarding eligibility under LURDA for certain tax, for certain property tax exemption for certain property located in Carbondale Township in Mayfield Borough. Whereas the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has enacted legislation known as the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, LURDA, Act 76 of 1977, amended July 11, 1998, which authorizes local taxing authorities to provide for tax exemption for certain deteriorated residential, commercial, and other business properties. And whereas pursuant to LURDA statute, the Mayfield Borough Planning Commission and Carbondale Township Planning adopted respectively Resolution Number 2 on July 2, 2022, and Resolution Number 1 on August 16, 2022, to designate the properties identified as PIN number 0640401003, currently described in Lackawanna County's assessor's office records as Powderly Bank #2, South Rider, compromising approximately 79.11 acres. PIN number 0640402001, currently described in Lackawanna County's assessor's office records as PT Samuel Rider Tract, compromising approximately 105.8 acres. PIN number 0640401002, currently described in Lackawanna County assessor's office records as Archibald Branch, compromise comprising, sorry, approximately 21.57 acres, and PIN number 0640401001, currently described in Lackawanna County assessor's office as Samuel Rider Tract, compromise comprising approximately 1.01 acres, together located in Carbondale Township. PIN number 06403020001, currently described in Lackawanna County assessor's office records as James Rider TR, comprising approximately 39.44 acres. PIN number 0640302000101, currently described in Lackawanna County assessor's office records as PT of James Rider TR, comprising approximately 100.5 acres, and PIN number 07402010001, currently described in Lackawanna County assessor's office records as James Rider TR, comprising approximately 78.81 acres, together located in Mayfield Township, together all parcels comprising the property. As further recently described in the field surveys of March 3, 2022, conducted by Riley Associates, and attached hereto as Exhibit A, is blighted within Carbondale Township in Mayfield Borough. And whereas pursuant to the LURDA, the Carbondale Township Board of Supervisors and Mayfield Borough Council and Lakeland School District adopted respectively Resolution Number 2 on September 1, 2022, and Resolution Number 14 on September 14, 2022. The Lakeland School District adopted Resolution Number 1 on September 21, 2022, to designate the property identified, I'm not going to read all of the PIN numbers again, currently described in Lackawanna County assessor's office as Powderly Bank #2, comprising approximately 79.11 acres. Currently described in Lackawanna County assessor's office is PT Samuel Rider Tract, comprising approximately of 105.8 acres. Records is Archibald Branch comprising approximately 21.75 acres. Samuel Rider Tract, 1.01 acres, located in Carbondale Township. James Rider TR, 39.44 acres. PT of James Rider TR, 100.5 acres. James Rider TR, 78.81 acres, together located in Mayfield Township, as further recently described in the field surveys of March 3, 2022, conducted by Riley Associates, and attached hereto as Exhibit A, within Carbondale Township, Mayfield Borough, and the Lakeland School District, and grant a tax exemption for certain improvements to be constructed on the property and set forth in the municipality resolutions and school district resolution. And whereas Carrier Coal Enterprises and Ryan Coal Company have requested the County of Lackawanna to grant a tax exemption for certain improvements to be constructed on the property identified as PIN number 0640401000103, currently described in Lackawanna County's assessor's office records as Powderly Bank #2, South Rider, comprising approximately PIN number 06404020001, currently described in Lackawanna County assessor's office as PT Samuel Rider Tract, comprising approximately 105.8 acres. PIN number 0640401000102, currently described Lackawanna County assessor's office records as Archibald Branch, comprising approximately 21.57 acres. PIN number 0640401000101, currently described in the assessor's office as Samuel Rider Tract, 1.01 acres, currently located in Carbondale Township and Lakeland School District. PIN number 06403020001, currently described in Lackawanna County assessor's office as James Rider TR, 39.44 acres. PIN number 0640302000101, currently described in the assessor's office as PT of James Rider TR, 100.5 acres. And PIN number 07402010001, currently described in the assessor's office as James Rider TR, 78.81 acres, together located in Mayfield Township in the Lakeland School District, as further recently described in the field surveys of March 3, 2022, conducted by Riley Associates, and attached hereto as Exhibit A. Comprising areas designated by the Carbondale Township in Mayfield Borough is blighted and set forth in the Planning Commission resolutions and entitled to an exemption from real property taxes under LURDA for a period of 10 years under the municipality resolutions and school district resolutions. And the following PIN numbers. Okay. Section 2 exemption area. The following PIN numbers. as further recently described in the field surveys of March 3, 2022, conducted by Riley Associates, attached hereto as Exhibit A, are hereby specifically designated as being together a deteriorated area and are eligible as two participants in this tax exemption program, so long as it meets the prerequisites for the program as herein after described. Section 3 exemption amount. A. The amount to be exempted shall be limited to the exemption schedule as established by this resolution, and the assessment valuation attributed to the cost of construction of the new improvements to the deteriorator property in the designated areas in Mayfield Borough, Carbondale Township, and the Lakeland School District is set forth herein. Section 4 exemption schedule. All exemptions available hereunder shall be based upon the aggregate costs of improvement as follows. Number 1. The following real estate tax exemption schedule shall commence January 1 of the tax year immediately following the year in which Carbondale Township issues an occupancy permit issued on the property owned by Carrier Coal Enterprises, identified as PIN numbers 0640401000103, and 06404020001, and 0640401000102, and 0640401000101, together currently listed in Lackawanna County assessor's office records as comprising approximately 207.49 acres, as more fully described in Exhibit A, the Carbondale Township property. Number 2. The following real estate tax exemption schedule shall commence January 1 of the tax year immediately shall commence January first of the tax year immediately following the year in which the Mayfield Borough issues an occupancy permit on the property owned by Carrier Coal Enterprises and Ryan Coal Company, known as the James Rider Tract in Mayfield Borough, and identified as PIN numbers zero-six-four-zero-three-zero-two-zero-zero-one and zero-six-four-zero-three-zero-two-zero-zero-one-zero-one and zero-seven-four-zero-two-zero-one-zero-zero-one, together currently described in Lackawanna County assessor's office records as approximately two-hundred-and-eighteen-point-one-five acres, more fully described in Exhibit A, the Mayfield property. Lackawanna County, as a result of the increase in the tax assessment for the property attributed to the cost of future improvements constructed thereupon, exempts as follows. Year one, one-hundred percent tax exemption with zero percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year two, ninety-five percent tax exemption with five percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year three, ninety percent tax exemption with ten percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year four, eighty-five percent tax exemption with fifteen percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year five, eighty percent tax exemption with twenty percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year six, seventy-five percent tax exemption with twenty-five percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year seven, seventy percent tax exemption with thirty percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year eight, sixty-five percent tax exemption with thirty-five percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year nine, sixty-sixty percent tax exemption with forty percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Year ten, fifty-five percent tax exemption with forty-five percent of the value of the improvements to be paid. Section nine, effective date. This resolution shall be in full force and effective upon adoption. And it's hereby adopted today.
Thank you. Here to speak on this is Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This resolution is approving a local economic revitalization tax assistance program for a business park consisting of three eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-plus square-foot warehouses, spanning both Mayfield and Carbondale Township. The Borough, the Township and Lakeland School District have already approved their respective resolutions and the county will be following suit with this resolution. I will now turn it over to representatives of the developer and the landowner, Attorney Ryan Durkin and John Cowley from Cowley Real Estate, who can tell you a little bit more about the project.
I'd like to start out by thanking Lackawanna County Department of Economic Development, which has been instrumental in helping us get to this point. They've eased the process and been a fantastic partner. The project is, as Ms. Sacco described, an eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot, another eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot and another one-million-square-foot facility. They are warehousing and light manufacturing. We anticipate the approvals from DEP and municipalities to be completed by spring, late spring, early summer, after which construction would commence. Regarding the economic impact to the community, we're anticipating four-hundred to eight-hundred well-paying jobs for the municipalities and county, with hourly wages anticipated to range from eighteen-fifty-five dollars per hour and salary positions from forty-five thousand to one-hundred-and-fifty thousand. I think it's a great project for the area and we're looking forward to moving it along as soon as possible. Additionally, I'm here today to thank you on behalf of Sean Langen, Main Principal of Langen Development Economics, who was going to be here but had an emergency that pulled him away at the last second and he tried everything he could to be here. He couldn't be here, so unfortunately you've got his lawyer here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And further comment on it would be from John Cowley, who represents the landowners.
Morning Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come in and maybe try to describe what all those parcel numbers were, so we can all have a better understanding. My name is John Cowley and I represent the landowners. The landowner here is Carrier Coal Corporation. To describe a little bit of the genesis of this entire project, approximately just a little over two years ago, between two and two-and-a-half years ago, Carrier Coal and DNL Realty conveyed to Langen Development Economics a parcel of ground in Oliphant, Pennsylvania. That comprised a little over a hundred acres, I believe it was a hundred-and-twelve acres of ground. Today, roughly two years later, under roof in Oliphant Borough is a million-square-foot facility that you can see from the KC Highway over in the area of the the former Senram facility. You'll see the bright shiny roof panels that are on top of the building right now. The superstructure is there. That will be used for distribution. Northeast Pennsylvania has become a hotspot for distribution facilities due to the lack of land in other communities that are accessible to the highway systems that we have here and the growing demand for onsite and day-of and next-day delivery of virtually everything that you see everyone ordering on their telephones and on their computers at home. When we completed the sale to, just a little over two years ago, to Mr. Langen, he said to me, "John, do you have any other land? I prefer really to work with blighted properties." And I said, "Be careful, be careful what you're saying here." I said, "I have a test case not too far from Oliphant that would be as blighted a property as I've ever seen." And that is Exit Six on the KC Highway, which is now Meredith Street, which is the entrance to the city of Carbondale. The property that were described in all of those PIN numbers are various tax parcels to the left and to the right of Meredith Street that are currently covered with spoils piles from previous mining activities that took place in that area, where the residue that was not fissionable coal was left on top of the ground. There was a mine fire, excuse me, there was a fire that took place on the Mayfield site and on the Carbondale Township site. Meredith Street almost divides Mayfield Borough on the south side and Carbondale Township on the north side. We looked at it. He said it intrigued him. And ultimately, we came to a contract to sell that land to Langen Development Economics. We met with the Mayor Chelick in Mayfield Borough and his council of seven council persons. We met with the council up in Carbondale Township. At first, as is all our natures here, they were very skeptical of what we could possibly want that property for and what we would want to do with it. But when they came to know it, they came to know us, they gladly rezoned the property to accept commercial development, not commercial development, industrial development for warehousing and light industrial development. We met with PennDOT. PennDOT meeting was to be able to engineer entrances and exits to those properties right at the top of Meredith Street, closest to the KC Highway, near a park and drive lot that's there, so that whatever activity took place on those parcels would not bring truck traffic or additional traffic into either township or either borough. When we explained to to the councils and to the mayor the benefits, the economic benefits, the jobs, it's forecasted and, you know, I mean, it's not a crystal ball and it's a big number, but those facilities, two eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and one one-million-thousand-square-foot facilities for two-point-seven-million-square-feet of brand-new space, the jobs that they would typically provide would be between four-hundred and eight-hundred jobs. Those jobs would pay anywhere from eighteen-fifty an hour now to probably thirty, forty dollars an hour, depending on the the availability of people to work in them. Similar jobs down in the Lehigh Valley right now pay in excess of thirty dollars an hour. When we discussed the fact that these properties, when fully taxable, at the runout of the LRTA provision, generate approximately a dollar a square foot in total tax revenue to be split between the county, the township or borough and the school districts, it really went from a position within those governing bodies of being skeptical about what we intended to do there to, we think it's a great idea, how quickly can you start? And to answer that question, Mr. Langen indicated through Attorney Durkin that he would hope to finish the the DEP review and land development plan early in the spring, latest by early summer, excuse me, late in the spring to early summer. And his intention right now is to take it vertical, meaning that he will build the first building at least on that property, probably one of the eight-fifties himself on speculation and then attract a tenant to it. Much the same as was done in the Jessup Industrial Park, where Amazon came into a million-square-foot up there and is occupied and is, you know, working out of there right now. So in order to obtain the LRTA provision and for the benefit of the public, it's not necessarily, it's not a tax exemption. The properties will continue to pay tax on the land as if it were vacant. Once the buildings are constructed and a certificate of occupancy is issued by the governing body, either the township or the or the borough, the tax on the improvement graduates through the first ten years by five percent. In the first year, the exemption, the improvement would be taxed as if it were five percent of the total assessment. The second year, ten percent. The third year, fifteen, and so on till the eleventh year, when it becomes fully taxable. So at eleven years, and our hundred-year-old resident can tell you and I can tell you, ten to eleven years goes by anymore very, very quickly. You would have a taxable entity in the three to three-and-a-half-million-dollar range up there in what is phenomenally mine-scarred property right now. So we we look forward to Mr. Langen completing that development the same way that he had completed the development in Oliphant. We wish him good luck. The LRTA is a necessary tool for these developers to attract national tenants. The national tenants are the people that make the shoes and the clothes and the widgets and the car fenders that businesses today don't keep in stock, rather rely on getting on their phones or getting on their computers and having them delivered within a day's time. The warehouses that most probably will go on those lands will house that product. We look forward to them completing it. We appreciate your consideration and we would hope that your outlook on this thing also would be the same. It's not that if you grant the LRTA, which I hope you'll do, but how quickly can something like this be brought to fruition? A project located on the KC Highway that creates tax revenue, creates jobs, doesn't put undue strain within the towns via traffic on trucks or cars, it sounds like a, it sounds like a great alternative to the mess that's up there right now. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for having faith in this community like we all do. Anything else, Brenda?
No, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, Resolution two-two-zero-two-eight-eight.
Authorizing the submission of an application for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby authorize the submission of an application in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars for the Community Development Block Grant Non-Entitlement Municipalities in Lackawanna County under the federal fiscal year two thousand twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program as administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development and that the county proposes the following activities under the county's, on behalf of the entitlement application of federal fiscal year two thousand twenty-two CDBG program. Entitlement allocation by municipality. Archibald Borough, water and sewer and administration, one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty dollars. Blakely Borough, street improvements and administration, one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-and-ninety-six dollars. Clark Summit Borough, single-unit residential rehabilitation and administration, one-hundred-and-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. Dixon City Borough, storm water and sewer and administration, one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-two-hundred-and-six dollars. Dunmore Borough, street improvements and administration, two-hundred-and-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. Jessup Borough, storm water and administration, one-hundred-thousand-three-hundred-and-ten dollars. Old Forge Borough, single-unit residential rehabilitation and administration, one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. Oliphant Borough, sewer and street improvement and administration, one-hundred-and-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. Scott Township, public utilities improvement and administration, one-hundred-and-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars. Taylor Borough, single-unit residential rehabilitation and administration, one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-fifty-six dollars. Truitt Borough, single-unit residential rehabilitation and administration, ninety-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars. Be it further resolved that Lackawanna County will comply with the terms of Pennsylvania Act one-seventy-nine in connection with the above-mentioned grant program, serving the needs of low and moderate-income residents and eliminating slums and blighting influences.
Anyone have any questions for Brenda about this? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Resolution two-two-zero-eight-nine.
Entering into an amended agreement with Northampton County. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve and enter into an amended purchase of service agreement with Northampton County for the Department of Juvenile Probation, effective October first, two thousand twenty-two, for the guarantee of availability of bed space for four juvenile detainees.
Anyone have any questions about that? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution two-two-zero-two-nine-zero.
Entering into a contract amendment for the Area Agency on Aging. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve and enter into a contract amendment on behalf of the Area Agency on Aging with Information Age Technologies Incorporated for enhanced billing software and support services.
Mr. Kowalich, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. This is a rate increase for one of our vendors. This vendor actually helps us manage the senior center accounts, keeps track of our meals, makes sure that, you know, we're not being overcharged. It also helps us manage our caregiver support program within the county. We think it's fair, it's well within reasonable request and it just goes with the current economics.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Two-two-zero-two-nine-one.
Approving provider agreements. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Lackawanna-Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, provider agreements with Youth Advocate Programs Incorporated and Maxim Healthcare Services.
Good morning Commissioners.
How are you?
Good. Thank you for reviewing these contracts. These are two contracts for current fiscal year, as was indicated, with Youth Advocate Program and Maxim Healthcare. These contracts are for intellectual disability services for individuals living in Lackawanna and Susquehanna Counties. The Youth Advocate Program will be delivering community participation support, companion, respite, in-home and community support, supportive employment, homemaker, chore services. Maxim will be delivering primarily nursing services, but also will deliver in-home and community support, companion, homemaker, chore, family aid and respite. And these services will be delivered at state-set rates under this contract and the allocation will be limited to a fee-for-service, meaning each service delivered will be compensated. So an unknown amount of funding, but will be So, an unknown amount of funding, but will be based on a unit delivered to the individual.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Any more questions?
Nope.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Excuse me, one minute.
Hello, my name is Abigail Mikelski.
Hello.
I live on Penn Avenue in Scranton. I would first like to apologize to Commissioner Debbie Dominic. There was a prison board meeting where I mentioned that leaders and representatives in the Senate were apathetic. And I have to be honest with you, you were one of those people that was not. Your office did try to help me, and you were incapacitated shortly afterward. I truly believe that anything that is said about you is wrong, being that you are the only person on the prison board in the Commissioners Committee that has tried to in-state help into the prisons. I really think you might be someone that is trying to help and being pushed out, and so I would like to apologize to you.
Thank you.
You are welcome, and I am so sorry about your son.
Nothing's wrong with my son.
You had mentioned that you watched someone, and maybe it wasn't your son, you'd watched someone go in and out of the prison system, and they had died of a drug overdose, I believe is what you said.
Oh, no. You say my son almost had a stroke. Um, no.
No, I know, he's little. I thought maybe you had another one.
No, he was just a very close family of the friend who I, who lived with me for a long period of time and who I, who I considered almost like a, like a son or a nephew to me.
I'm so sorry. There was a man that passed.
It happens every day to many people.
According to Patrick Flynn, yes, in Lackawanna County, the number is over nine-thousand a year.
Yeah, it's outrageous.
So we have a pandemic. So I would like to read something from the Code of Ethics and Standards and Financial Disclosure for local government. It's chapter eleven, and where I would like to begin is section G, quorum. Four members of the commission shall constitute a quorum, except as provided in section 1108-G relating to investigation by commission. The votes of a majority, the chairman, and any four members of the commission may call a meeting, provided that advance written notice is mailed to each member and to any person who requests notice of such meeting. B, excuse me, H. H says compensation. Members of the commission shall be compensated at a rate of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per day and shall receive reimbursement for their actual and necessary expenses while performing the business of the commission. The next thing I would like to read, and bear with me just one moment.
Excuse me. I would like to...
Excuse me. Can you back up and slow down? Is that what you wanted?
Oh, I'm sorry. I can read that again before I read the second thing.
What do we do with this?
All right. So this is, is this good? Okay. This is chapter eleven, Local Government, Ethics, Standards, and Financial Disclosure. This is G, if you go down. Quorum. Four members of the commission shall contribute to a quorum, except provided section 1108-G relating to investigations by commission. The vote of a majority of the members present are required for any action or recommendation of the commission. The chairman or any four members of the commission shall call a meeting, provided that advance written notice is mailed to each member and to any person who requests notice of such meetings. H, compensation. Members of the commission shall be compensated at a rate of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day and shall receive reimbursement for their actual unnecessary expenses while performing the business of the commission. I would like to read this as well.
I...
If you will.
I, I think...
I would like to ask a question afterward, but I would like to get this out.
Okay, I think, I think from the whispers I'm hearing that maybe we're confused as to the...
Okay.
Not your point. I don't mean to be disrespectful.
What commission is she talking about? What commission are you talking about?
So this is the Code of Ethics for Commissioners, Board of Electors, anybody that sits there. This is actually from the Commonwealth. I pulled that up from the website.
Okay. What would your question be?
So my question is this. As I've stood before you every time, I've disclosed the details of my story. They're horrendous. I have been horribly treated by this county, with the exception of a few. What I had proposed to you would never have my, even had my involvement, but was literally because I have spoken to local police officers that are frustrated, and you can't tell me with a two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-to-one sex offender to person in Lackawanna County that we don't have an issue. In Old Forge, it's four-thousand-to-one. In Dunmore, it's one-thousand-nine-hundred-to-one. I have been sexually harassed. I have been asked to prostitute myself. I have, I am trying to heal from a cervical misalignment, having my shoulder torn out of place. I have been denied a PFA against that man. I have had my paperwork misplaced by the ERAP program four times. I've had the register of deeds not registering things to the county. UNC lose my paperwork twice, three times. My realtor paid four grand for me to move in. And why in 2018 did you, excluding the DA, give yourself four percent raises every year? But yet people that are suffering like me, and it's on the website. Why are we not heard?
I believe that raise, wait, I believe that raise was done by the prior administration, wasn't it?
How can it be at a special meeting of council? No. What I'm saying is, during coronavirus, you started at sixty, what, sixty-six grand a year? Four percent raises every year, and people like me can't even get help?
I don't think, I don't think that's the case. I don't think you can't get help. I really don't.
No, I think that you don't understand, because I've talked to all the case managers. Keisha, I have with social services.
And again, I think you...
I don't care what you think.
Oh, okay, thank you.
No, I don't. You know why? Because people are hurting.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
People are hurting.
All right, ma'am.
Do you have anything else?
Besides, you're just unhappy with the way you've been treated by Lackawanna County?
No, not just me. There's so many people.
Okay, all right. Anyone have any questions for the Commissioners?
There's so many case managers that are angry. How can you negate that there is a problem? How can you negate that there is a problem?
There's a lot of problems in the world, and county government can't solve them all, nor do we have the authority to.
But maybe, I'm not asking you to solve them. What I presented to you was twenty-four pages with all types of statistics attached, and it would involve nothing of me. I attached all those statistics of how many sex offenders there are, of how many times I've been sexually harassed in organizations.
And again...
Trying to receive help. It is so frustrating trying to receive help. How can you look at me after divulging the details of my story and confront me in private and say things like, "We are very proud of all the services that we offer," and nullify me? If it could have been done, it would have been me, the person that's doing all of this, the person that created thirty-four pages.
He's not meaning to, I'll speak on his behalf. He's not meaning to nullify you by any...
Don't you think that I wouldn't stand here and tell everybody the details of my story?
Excuse me for one second. Listen, I'm here and I'm...
I didn't have to.
Listen, listen to me for one second, please. I'm here and I'm trying to help. I read your packet of information. I sent it to the Department of Human Services. We're planning on meeting.
And that's fine.
But a lot of the information in the packet does not concern county government.
I know, that's why the Senate has it.
It concerns the police departments.
That's why the Senate has it.
It concerns the Women's Resource Center, so we have to get all of those private organizations and the police departments together. It takes a village. It's not just county government.
Can I ask you why no one contacted me that?
It's also the city, it's also many different people.
Yes, I know that, because it's about case management.
But I am trying to work on it.
And the interventions, that's what it's about. It's about community development and interventions where you try to implement services and whether they work.
Wholeheartedly agree. That is definitely something that our Department of Human Services does.
But I, it would have been nice, I have to be honest, just a phone call, just a phone call. Hey, I know you're gonna be homeless on the thirtieth, and I know the mission said they couldn't help you, and I know they refer to you as the devil's daughter, and if you read the back, you saw the way that I've been treated.
None of that I was aware of.
Well, but that was in the packet. The back four pages has everything that's ever been done to me, and it's, and the stories just like mine of people trying to get help and being treated terribly, which is why I created the Compliance Inspector position.
All right, ma'am, ma'am, stop. Respectfully, we've listened. Tracy has responsibly responded to...
Not to me.
Listen, stop trying to overtalk. Just listen for one second, please. She's responded. We've taken the information you've offered to us. We've presented it to Human Services, and we're gonna be meeting to try to address those.
I've also presented it to the Senate.
Let me finish. Listen, we, all right, have a good day.
You should have known that sooner. All right. Commissioners, anything, Chris?
Just, everyone, if they can please support the United Way. They do great work, and we are headed into some difficult times with winter coming and fuel prices, so if you can give, please give what you can max out, if you can. And also, our friend Eddie's left for the day, but we have another birthday, and we just want to wish Boris a happy birthday today, so enjoy your day. I don't think you're a hundred, though, right?
I don't, I'm not sure.
That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Dominic is gone, so on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Other question? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.